Probably. I don't, sorry. Also. Yeah, I guess there's some complications. Some type of, it's like you didn't, I haven't heard about it. Yeah, they, he says. He says, uh, they have to reinstall, they have to rip it out, come on, and reinstall it. They have to, they put in some type, it's almost like a paste maker. It's supposed to like numb your nerves or something. And, uh, I guess this, he says they have to rip it out, come on, and reinstall it if it works right. Alright, I guess he's in anger now, so it's taking it easy.
Let the record show, six o'clock, we're called meeting to order. Sarah, would you give us a roll call, please? Present.
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 Okay, we do have a quorum. First item on the agenda is to approve the agenda as it's been sent to you and as it appears before you this evening.
Motion to approve the agenda.
Motion by Mr. Deal to approve the agenda, second by Ms. Norton. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Agenda has been approved. The next item on the agenda is, uh, the open governmental process. Is there anyone that signed up for that? Okay, no one signed up for that. Next item is approval of the meeting minutes. Again, you've had those emailed to you and you have them before you this evening. Is there a motion to approve? Motion by Ms. Norton, second by Mr. Deal to approve the minutes as submitted. All those in favor? Opposed? Motion approved. Alright, we're gonna begin our public hearings. Uh, we have two public hearings this evening. One is for Douglas Short Preliminary Final Plat. Request for waiver.
And before I read the staff report for this public hearing, I just wanted to, uh, share some information with you from staff regarding the staff reports. Uh, as we proceed with the staff reports for waivers and sidewalk exceptions, you will see a change in the format of the project notes and the recommendations. Uh, so staff will be outlining the known details in the project notes and the recommendation will be based upon what is in the best interest of the county and the community. So you've seen a, a format that has changed a little bit over the last year or two on the, the waivers and the exceptions. So just wanted to call that out, that you'll be seeing that from this point forward.
Thank you.
Uh, this public hearing is for a request for waiver for the Douglas E. Short Preliminary Final. File number three dash twenty. Developer is Douglas Short and the surveyor is Greg Yaburnetsky. It's located in the Mill Creek District, Tax Map 10K, Parcel 72. It's approximately thirty-five hundred feet east of West Virginia Secondary Route 51 over seven. Uh, Soffler Springs Road onto Chopwood Drive. This project proposes the subdivision of an existing five point zero two-two-eight acre lot and the proposed lot sizes and utilities at this time are unknown. The developer is requesting a waiver to the Berkeley County Subdivision Ordinance, Section 305.4.1, requiring lots to have frontage on a West Virginia Department of Highway road to proceed through the preliminary final process. The proposed parcel is Lot 12 in Timberview Subdivision, which was final-platted in 1986. It's unknown if there's an active homeowners association or if covenants and restrictions allow for further subdivision. Also, staff has concerns regarding the maintenance of Chopwood Drive. Engineering staff would like more information before making a recommendation. Uh, for example, if there's an active homeowners association and how much road frontage each proposed lot will have. And these notes are based upon the supporting documentation provided within the waiver application. Planning staff recommends denial of the waiver to Section 305.4.1, requiring lots to have frontage on a West Virginia DOH road to proceed through the preliminary final process.
Hey, do we have anyone to represent the project? I appreciate your, uh, zealousness, but not quite yet.
Yes, Greg Yaburnetsky and Mr. Short is also here.
Thank you.
To answer your questions, yeah, I think we can answer all these, all, all the questions they have right here. There is a homeowners association in there that was, uh, that was, uh, approved in February of eighty-six. So the, and the homeowners association does require, does have maintenance fees for maintain, maintaining the roads. So the access to the road is taken care of, all of those problems are, are resolved there. When it comes to the subdividing part of it, there was one, one of the restrictions said they could not subdivide until public water was provided. There is public water out on the site. There's also public sewer out there now too, so there is. We have water and sewer both available on the lot. The concern of the, uh, engineering department, I actually talked to a county engineer. As far as I know, when we talked, he had no problem with the road, but I'll show you as far as the right of way goes, you, the front top sheet you actually have in your, in your plan, but the second sheet is actually the preliminary plan that I've worked out that shows that there's only forty foot of frontage, but we got, we split it with twenty on each lot. And I'd say I ran this by Mr. Stansberry and Dirk seemed to have no problem with the, with, you know, our, our proposed design of that, or the two future lots. So, uh, really, as far as I can see, that, you know, we've met all the, uh, all the, the concerns, I think, that the staff had right there. They did have a lot of the, that the information, a lot of it's not really required under the waiver request, so I would've put it in there if I would've known that. I'm sure you want to see that too. So basically, I, I think that, you know, we've answered all the questions that we have right there and although, like I say, this is just pretty much all. You can see two of the adjoining lots also have already been divided, so it, you know, it's not like it's, you know, be different from what the community already has, two of the adjoining five acre lots have already been cut in half also.
Which ones are that? Which ones are the ones that have already been divided?
If you, if you see to the, going back, it looks like the street there says Roosevelt and Chopwood. Both lots to the, to the west there have both, the, both of those three and two acre lots, that was a five acre lot originally. And then the other one is both, two and a half and two and a half, that was originally one of the lots. So both of those lots have been cut. I think they're, lot number fourteen was cut into fourteen and fourteen A and thirteen was cut into thirteen A and B. The, there have been other, you know, lots have been subdivided, you know, already in that development.
When were they subdivided, do you know?
I have no, I have no idea. You said you did the one, when was that done?
Wrong, two thousand.
He actually was, he was the owner of one of them, been divided, the lot thirteen.
Okay. Still, um, this does not front on a West Virginia, do you await?
That's, that's what, that's what the waivers for us, we're asking for.
But it does not?
It does not, I don't think. State has not made, the state has not taken that road over, but it does have maintenance on it through the homeowners association.
Now, did we hear the public hearing? Do you have something you need to say?
We had a copy of the homeowners' association, which is not built up and working, was by subdividing the lot one time.
Let's just have, let's just have one person speaking at a time. The lady here in the aqua color, you have the floor. Okay, and give us your name, please.
Jackie Shirley.
Okay.
Yes, I haven't met Mr. Short yet.
Mr. Short, do you want to please have a seat while Mrs. Shirley is speaking? Thank you.
We wasn't sure what was going on, we seen the sign from the meeting and all of the waiver, but, uh, from what we're hearing, he's going to divide it down the middle, put two houses, and that's allowed. You know, we had several neighbors that's done that already. And no one has state road frontage. I mean, it is a homeowners development, you have access and each lot, after he subsides, each lot will be responsible for the $200 to maintain roads per year. And if he's only putting, you know, one, uh, one house on each lot, then, you know, he's, yeah. We didn't really see nothing outside of the rules, but, uh, we didn't know if he was trying to hook through a state road on the back of his property or what all exactly was going on. It's what we, just trying to make clear that we were all on the same page as far as what was going on with the property.
Thank you. Ma'am, do you want to say something? Do you want to just give us your name for the record, please?
You want to say, well, yes, I may.
No. No, just give us your name for the record.
I'm Carol Glasscock.
Okay.
Okay. The address we've been sending the mail to is 678 Chopwood Drive. It's the address on the property. There is not a mailbox there. I wasn't aware. That's how I learned. Something was wrong. It kept coming back to me. I'm handing him, so he knows what we're up to date on.
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much. Is there anyone else who wishes to speak regarding the public comment? No one else wishes to speak regarding public comment on this project?
Please, public hearings closed.
Excuse me? Okay, alright, rec, uh, the motion by Mr. Lewis and second by Mr. Deal to close the public hearing. All those in favor? Opposed? Public hearing is closed. Okay, now, planning commission members, it's up to you to decide whether or not you want to grant the waiver to the West Virginia DOH right of way. Just give us your name.
For the record, Andy Blake, your lawyer.
Thank you. Well, they did, maybe not.
Andy Blake, their lawyer. Tonight, you're not actually approving or denying the subdivision. What you're doing is, you're approving or denying the expedited process to get to the next stage. The whole point of the ordinance is to have frontage on a DOH road is because if it has frontage on a DOH road, it's automatically assumed that that road is maintained. By denying the waiver this evening, with, uh, staff recommendation, all it's doing is the planning commission is going to now request that the homeowners association provide proof that the road is going, that these lots are going to pay into the association and the road's going to be maintained. The whole point of the ordinance is to make sure that you no longer subdivide or allow development on roads that are orphaned or no longer taken care of, which, you know, we dealt with before. So that's the whole point. The whole point is not a recommendation to deny, deny the subdivision ultimately. The point of the staff recommendation is to ensure that this planning commission has enough evidence in the future that this, that these lots are going to pay in and be maintained by the homeowners association. Thank you.
Just a question for you.
Yes.
So would it be appropriate to, um, delay this decision until the March 2nd meeting? And the engineer, the planning department, to get together, iron all those things out prior to it being loaded?
You certainly have the ability to table the, the request tonight and if the, the information is provided to the planning office that shows that the road is actually going to be maintained, then you certainly have more evidence and better evidence to grant the waiver. Again, the, the whole point of the provision is to make sure that the road is going to be maintained by an entity. They do have an homeowners association, which is, which is good and that they are maintaining the rest of, of the road and have the responsibility for going so. Just to make sure that the extra lot that is coming into the subdivision also is going to be paying dues. So instead of paying one dues, they'll be paying two dues. We don't, we don't, we don't have any of those documents, so we don't feel comfortable recommending, uh, a waiver until we get those documents. So this board could table it until the next meeting.
You've got the, you've got the board right here, you've got the president of homeowners association right here in front of you.
Yeah, we, we can't make those. Any other questions? Again, we're not asking you to deny the subdivision, we're just request, asking you to allow us to get more information, which is a very, this is the first time, honorable members, that we've even seen, seen. And certainly haven't read it.
So should we grant, should we grant more time if we, what, denying the, denying the?
You don't have to deny, you do motion.
No, I'm gonna, I'm gonna make a recommendation or vote that we table this until March the 2nd. They can share the covenants and restrictions with the planning commission's office, get that ironed out and bring it back, requesting the waiver on March 2nd.
Okay, I have a motion by Mr. Lewis, second by Mr. Deal to, uh, table the approval until March 2. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. March 2, we'll hear it again.
I need to do any more information, I mean, you just want to review the homeowners association document, what, what else do you need?
It'd be very, it'd be very, it'd be very helpful to have a letter from the homeowners association saying that upon subdivision of the lots, that the homeowners association is going to assume maintenance of the, of the road in front of it and that those two lots will be paying dues.
I know you said you haven't read.
Yeah, I have not read, I have not read.
Says, "The homeowners association, through its board officials, may assess, if the full basis is hereby set forth, whatever reasonable figure they deem necessary to maintain the roads." That's what I read when I did developments, you know.
You, you may have, you may have wanted to submit that whenever you submitted the project.
I didn't know, if I would've known, if I knew that, I would've done it. I, that's part of my due diligence. I wouldn't have asked the guy to subdivide it if I didn't know we couldn't subdivide it. We couldn't take care of the roads. That's part of what I do, but I can, I can make sure that's part of the.
Note, note to self for future.
Yeah, and, and you know something, that's great, and next time, this should not, I mean, on March 2nd, this should not be an issue. Now we have those documents and now we know the road's going to be maintained. So I think mission accomplished on, on that and March 2nd will be before and now the road's going to be maintained and it shouldn't be an issue.
It, I, just let me ask Heather then, uh, are, in the revision of the subdivision regulations, are you going to take care of that little sentence that says that it has to be on a DOH highway? So it's still going to have the same language? It has to be on a Department of Highways, uh, eighteen road? Alright. Okay.
I'm not going to discuss.
I just wondered what you'd do next on this, if I guess I wait till your motion is.
They already made the motion, we voted on it.
It's gonna come back.
Yeah, March 2. Yes, ma'am. Thank you. Alright, the next project for a public hearing is the Lakes at Martinsburg, Phase 1, Section 6.
This, uh, public hearing is for final plat approval. Lakes at Martinsburg, Phase 1, Section 6, File Number 85 dash 03. Developers Banbury Holdings LLC and the engineers Gordon. It's located in the Opeckin District, Map 2, Parcel 35, along Weaver Lane, approximately half mile west of its intersection with US Route 11, north of Martinsburg. Final plat proposes the development of eighty-three single-family lots on 134.61 acres to be served by public water and sewer. The final plat meets the requirements of the subdivision ordinance. Therefore, staff recommends final plat approval contingent upon receipt of surety in the amount of $1,942. $942,000, that should be a comma. And $320. I'll read the whole thing again. $1,942,320 and an executed developers agreement plat to be released upon receipt of surety.
Those numbers are a little bit above your pay grade, aren't they?
Too many commas, yeah, not used to that.
That's the fact, read those numbers. Okay, do we have anyone to represent the project?
Good evening, Ryan Perks from Gordon.
Thank you. Again, this is a public hearing for the lakes. Do we have anyone who wishes to speak regarding this project? Please come forward, state your name and the comments you may have.
Motion to close public hearing.
Let the record show that there's no public comments. Have a motion by Mr. Smith to close public hearing. Second by Ms. Norton. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Public hearing is closed. Okay, planning commission members, do you have questions of Mr. Perks or of the staff?
There are no questions, I make a motion to accept staff recommendations on final plat approval contingent upon receipt of surety in the amount of $1,942,320 and an executed developers agreement and a plat to be released upon surety.
Thank you. Second by Mr. Smith. All those in favor? Opposed? Motion passed.
Thank you.
That concludes our public hearings. The next project on the agenda is Evans Run.
This is a request for preliminary final plat. Evans Run LLC, File Number 53 dash 19. Developer is Evans Run LLC. Surveyor is Roberts Land Surveying. It's in the Arden District, Map 9, Parcel 61. Located at the intersection of West Virginia Route 30, Arden-Noville Road and West Virginia Route 30 over 2, Tinsman Lane. This project proposes the creation of two lots and one residue to be served by private well and septic. Both lots one and two are two acres and the residue is approximately 68.7 acres. County engineer Dirk Stansberry issued a letter of approval on January 17th, 2020, stating a review of this project has been complete and found to be in compliance. Since the project is found to be in compliance, staff recommends approval of the preliminary final plat.
Okay, do we have anyone to represent Evans Run?
Good evening, Mike Roberts, Representative Project.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Roberts. Mr. Smith is going to recuse himself due to conflict of interest. But he will stay in the room to keep the quorum.
To have a clarification question, this is not part of the Tinsman quorum, is it? That runs on out that, or Tinsman Road, Lane, whatever that is that runs along.
It is at the intersection, Tinsman Lane and Arden-Noville Road. Directly across from the entrance to Orange.
Is it part of the subdivision that we had a great deal of public comment on?
Yes, ma'am. It's the first two lots, first two outings from that subdivision.
So it is part of the subdivision, but it is just outing.
These two lots are on the southwest corner of the property at the intersection.
They front on Tinsman, not Arden-Noville.
One lot fronts on Tinsman, one lot fronts on Arden-Noville. They, well, the corner lot has frontage on both, and it's access will be on Arden-Noville.
Is it, one of these lots really deep? Is that what I'm seeing here?
No, ma'am.
What's, what's this one?
Yeah, that, that's, that's an adjoining.
So this is one, two, and three here?
Does the run, run through these two lots?
No, no, sir. It's, it's at the other end of the property. It's, it's further north of these two lots.
Planning commission members, uh, other than Mr. Lewis, do you have any questions?
There are no questions, I make, uh, a motion to accept staff recommendations, recommend approval of preliminary final plat.
Motion by Mr. Lewis. Second, second by Ms. Norton to accept staff recommendation and approve the preliminary final plat for Evans Run, um, File Number 53 dash 19. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
I'm staying.
Yeah. Mr. Deal, did you vote?
No, I, I voted yes.
Read ahead, right? Okay, the motion. Let the record show that Mr. Smith is now back as voting. The next item on the agenda is Rocks Hedgesville.
It is a request for preliminary plan approval, File 11 dash 18. The developer is SAB Real Estate 2 LLC. Engineer is Gordon. Hedgesville District, Map 22, Parcels 27.1. This site is located northeast of Hedgesville Road, West Virginia Route 9 and Roaring Lion Drive intersection, I'm sorry, and the Roaring Lion Drive intersection in the Hedgesville tax district. Taxi District. The project site contains a total of 3.58 acres. The development proposed includes a 7,000-square-foot convenience store with fueling stations and a 10,500-square-foot general retail building to be served by public water and sewer. At the April 2, 2018, Planning Commission meeting, the developer was granted an exception to Section 705 to not install sidewalks. On July 11, 2019, the county engineer Dirk Stansberry issued a letter of approval and stated that the preliminary plan meets the requirements to advance to the final plat stage. The preliminary plan meets the requirements of the subdivision ordinance, therefore, staff recommends advancement of the preliminary plan to the final plat stage.
Okay, do we have anyone to represent the project?
Good evening, Ryan Perks from Gordon.
Thank you. Planning commission members, do you have questions of Mr. Perks or of the staff?
This is a property spread across from... If there are no questions, I make a motion to accept staff recommendations, advancement of final, final...
Motion by Mr. Lewis, second by Mr. Deal. All opposed in favor? Was it him?
Both of them.
Oh, okay. Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passed.
Thank you.
Next item on the agenda is the Dollar General Store in Bunker Hill.
Request for preliminary plan approval, File 13-19. The developer is Cross Development LLC. The engineer is Tektonics Design Group. It's in the Mill Creek District, Map 17, Parcel 4.1. This project is located approximately 380 feet northeast from the intersection of Winchester Avenue and Continental Drive. This project proposes a 9,100-square-foot Dollar General commercial building to be served by public water and sewer. At the July 1, 2019, Planning Commission meeting, the developer was granted an exception to Section 705 to not install sidewalks along US Route 11. On August 30, 2019, the county engineer Dirk Stansberry issued a letter of approval and stated that the preliminary plan meets the requirements to advance to the final plat stage. The preliminary plan meets the requirements of the subdivision ordinance 2009, therefore, staff recommends advancement of the preliminary plan to the final plat, excuse me, final plat stage.
Okay, thank you. Do we have anyone to represent the project?
May I have Rebecca Siegel with Cross Development?
Thank you. Planning commission members, do you have questions of Ms. Siegel or of...
Is Cross Development Dollar General or just...
We're the landlord, there are...
Landlord, so you lease it out to Dollar?
Yes.
My only questions are this, is that, you know, Dollar General pops up everywhere. 4.8 miles north and to the, a little bit to the east is Dollar General. Five miles a little further east is another Dollar. It just seems like they're just everywhere.
They want to provide...
Within a five-mile radius of where you're going to be, there's four different places where somebody gets popped in. That's the same as the Dollar General. I have a question for five, two minutes. I live in the south end of the county, and I worry about empty buildings becoming ours and used car lots. And if you go up and down Route 11, that's all we have. So, you know, and concerned, won't make it. I think Dollar General relies heavily on foot traffic. Not a lot of foot traffic around there. A lot of traffic go up and down 11, but you've gone to Winchester, that area, but not
Commission members, do you have additional questions? There are no questions, then I have the motion.
If there are no questions, I make a motion to approve staff recommendation and advance to, advance to the preliminary plan, advance the preliminary plan to the final plat stage.
Motion by Mr. Smith. Second by Mr. Deal. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
Record showed there's a no by Mr. Lewis, and I'm assuming that it's not those items that you had. Motion passed. Item number nine, staff counsel, discussion, action, motion. And quite eloquently you did. And you made it quite eloquently.
Actually, I have a question for you about, if, if we would have denied that waiver, would you have been able to subdivide that property? Still would have?
You'd have had to go through the more comprehensive process. This was the, this was the shortcut approach, which is kind of equivalent to a minor boundary, a minor subdivision without being a minor. We've discussed this. Basically, anything two or more is a major subdivision here, which we need to look at really carefully. Okay? So he could have, eventually he would have, we would have gotten to the same process that we eventually got to tonight, where we needed some documentation that the road was going to be maintained. Now, if he couldn't provide documentation that the road was going to be maintained by an entity, then we would recommend that subdivision be denied.
Got you.
Ultimately.
So what happens if we have documentation indicating that there are bylaws, I guess, for HOA, but we don't have a letter from HOA? I'm excited. That letter necessary? I mean, the reason I'm asking is to make sure...
So granting the waiver is discretionary upon this planning commission. You're not, again, you're not approving or denying the subdivision. You're approving the process.
Got you.
So I'm advising the staff in the planning commission, yes, I can, you know, you can read the, the covenants and restrictions that were just provided to us this evening, but a letter, the first step is a letter from the planning, or from the homeowners association saying, yes, we currently maintain the road, we will maintain the road, here are the conditions to maintain the road. You have to be, you have, the applicant's going to have to pay dues for the two lots. If the homeowners association doesn't provide that letter, then we would go back and we would look at the actual formation, the documents that form the homeowners association. But I think that the planning commission's first request should be provide a letter from the homeowners association. If that doesn't happen, then we'll go from, from there. But the first thing you should do is ask for the letter from the homeowners association, and I think they're going to provide, they're going to provide it.
Oh, yeah, sure they would.
And the letter will have recently...
I, I got the impression from Mr. Yevreninsky that he will follow up and make sure that that, that letter is provided.
And, and, you know, well, I, I got the impression that he said that he thought he'd already done that.
Well, he did it this evening. He did it this evening.
And see, he's not, he's not provided it, we've... And we don't know by looking at it, I'm sure it was most up-to-date covenant. We don't know whether or not those are the covenants that are actually recorded. We don't know whether the covenants have been revised. I mean, literally, we just, it wasn't the point that we're not, we're not opposed to the subdivision, we're opposed to the process of, we didn't have enough information to advise you to grant a waiver to go to the next step. That, that's as simple as it was, and now on March 2nd, they work with that information, and staff can now recommend, go through the process. And to your point about the subdivision ordinance, you know, that your current language, it just, it just assumes that if it fronts a DOH highway, then you automatically have someone that maintains it. You know, you can change the ordinance that says DOH maintained highway or other evidence that's presented that the road is maintained by someone, some entity, or, you know, that it's not orphaned. The whole point is just to make sure that you're subdividing a piece of land on a road that's maintained by somebody. So we don't have, like, is it Clary, the Clary Grove situation? Or numerous other situations around the county that has nobody maintained the road?
Well, you came up with... Right, but I mean, you know, do they get the comments before...
Anytime a waiver... Also seems to me that they thought that that would be requirement to subdivide. Well, I guess it is, but...
Well, to go the next step. Tonight, the only thing was to go ahead and do it.
I don't, I, well, what I, I guess what I'm trying to say is that I don't think they realized that if it was maintained by HOA, they would get an approval, so that they were trying to find this waiver. That's kind of what I...
Anything else? Thank you.
Motion by Ms. Norton to adjourn at 6:42.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Meeting is adjourned.
Fun stuff.
Loser.
Yeah. Well, based on any of these projects, I don't think that would have tried to...
So now, Tim, why don't you like Dollar General?